Good afternoon. It's Tuesday, May 20th, 21st, 2024. This is the main meeting of the Davenport Public Library Board of Trustees. We're meeting in Meeting Room C of the Davenport Public Library of Maine. My name is Steve Dimming, President of the Board of Trustees, and I'd like to call this meeting the word. First item on the agenda is introduction or roll call, introduction of attendees. Do the roll call. Malavika Shukandi?
Present.
Sylvia Roma?
Here.
Amanda Mata?
Here.
Laura Guinness? Judy Lance?
Here.
Joe Heinrichs?
Here.
Michael Huston?
Here.
And myself, Steve Dimming, is present. Tom Wingman is not, but we haven't heard he's not coming, nor do Laura, so.
Twelve and a half minutes.
Okay. Also with us today, we have Jeff Collins, Library Director, Jennifer Williams, HR Operations Manager, Casey Shipley, Office and Facilities Manager and Recorder, Tracy Moore, Development Officer, Hillary Tanner, who's President of the Friends of the Library Board, Marion McGuinness, our City Council Liaison, and Kelly Shook from the City of Davenport. And also, we have with us today is Brad Utter with Global Security Services.
Can I just ask what Kelly's role is in the city?
I'm the Risk Management Supervisor.
Okay, thank you. I thought I should probably know that.
Yep.
Thanks, Kelly.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Before I open that up, we'd like to suggest that perhaps we swap a couple of items around that be Item Five and Item Six, Old Business and New Business. The only reason for that is, is that suspect that there may be considerable discussion on the old business item and then on the new business item. We have Mr. Utter here from Global Security Services, who indicated he may want to make a statement during our discussion. And so, just to walk on the stage, the whole meeting if you like. But on the other hand, if not, that will give you an opportunity to leave earlier, if you'd like. So, if I could have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of approval of the agenda, I would appreciate that.
I still.
Okay. Thank you, Malavika. Thank you, Sylvia. Okay, so the motion is to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the item approval of the agenda. Call for the vote. Malavika?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. Motion carries. Then, to go back to approval of the agenda with the change to swap Items Five and Six, Old Business and New Business, they have a motion to approve the agenda.
So I'll move.
Thank you, Joe. For a second?
A second.
Sylvia Malavika. A motion and second to approve the agenda with the change to swap Items Five and Six. Call for the vote. Sylvia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And my own vote is a whoops. My own vote is yes. And Malavika?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public with comment. See no one to do this with public with comment. Carry on. Next item on the agenda is Reports and Communications. First item there is report from Friends. Hillary? Maybe tell us what's going on with Friends. Give us an update.
Yeah, absolutely. We're kind of in what I would describe as more of a rebuilding phase. You know, we're at a time where we're looking for new board members. We have some great options, but Lexi has presented and Heidi has presented. So, looking forward to looking into those folks and then just kind of doing some rethinking about committees we have and looking forward to some reading program and see how we can do some more fundraising in the community.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Please let the record show that Laura Guinness is joining the meeting. After your walk.
We apologize. You're here.
Okay. Thank you, Hillary. Next item under Reports and Communications is Committee Reports. First item there is Finance. Joe?
Nothing stands out to me. We're, everything seems to be pretty much in line for timeframe.
We're wrapping this one up, huh?
Yeah. Now, onto the next one.
Yeah. Thank you, Joe. Next item under Committee Reports is Personnel. Amanda, do you have anything for Personnel Committee today?
I don't think I have anything, other than we have conversation later in the meeting that will touch on personnel issues, but I don't have anything from the committee.
Thank you. Next item under Committee Reports is Advocacy. Malavika?
Just wanted to share with you all. I'm on the inaugural Advisory Committee of the Central Nonprofit Excellence of the Citizens Committee Foundation. And most of the committee members are people who are our library clients. So, I have mentioned to them, suggested to them, if they would like to have an office meeting, they could have it in one of our libraries. Like, you know, we could showcase our library. So, they are interested, but I'm not sure when exactly. That was one. I Love Libraries, I think, is an arm. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff. I Love Libraries is an arm of American Library Association, I Love Libraries Organization. They had been talking a lot about public libraries in the United States and, you know, social service, help, and things like that, that are kind of public libraries, to which I shared with them that we have a full-time, you know, social worker on our, you know, it was kind of many people read and saw it. It was good, kind of, in the state of Alabama and the first and stuff like that. So, I shared that with them. I also wanted to thank Jeff for the wonderful PC made. Kirsty made? Yeah, Kirsty made events that the library organized. I went to one recent one, it was a John Deere Works, and it was just very excellent. Michael was there, too. Lastly, many thanks to the view of how our library is being seen on the social media platforms, especially with the recent library book offerings that have been done wonderfully after Met Gala, Tortured Poets Society, and just this morning, they have put up, and I'm going to say this wrong, so please correct me, the TV series Bridgerton. I've not seen it. And the beauty is, especially, I shared Met Gala on Library Think Tank, which is an ALA group, and there were 510 people. I kid you not, I counted because you can see the count on Facebook. There were 510 people, and they were jealous of what we did. So, it was just beautiful. So, thank you, Jeff. It's a lovely, lovely treat of how people are watching us.
Thank you, Malavika. And that's due mostly to Tessa Wallace, our Marketing Coordinator and Social Media Team.
Fantastic. Fantastic. Steve, that's all.
Okay. Thank you, Malavika. Next item under Reports and Communications is the Director's Report. Anything you want to add or amplify to what you said there?
Yeah, thank you, Steve. So, the first thing is on June 12th. We're told that three new library trustees that are going to be appointed by Mayor Mattson and confirmed by City Council. That'll be a regular City Council meeting. So, again, that's Wednesday, June 12th at 5:30 PM. If that goes according to the plan, their terms will start July 1st.
I guess if we could be replaced. That's right.
I said three new. I didn't say replaced.
Very curious. So, the agenda typically comes out on Fridays before the council meeting on Wednesday. So, they don't give biographies of people, but it should be on, it's usually on the agenda. So, if you go to City of Davenport, click at the top, go, you know, go to the government and its meeting minutes and agendas. Click on that, put in the date, and you should sneak it in.
A sneak review!
But it's there for everybody, so.
Not everyone. Sorry.
In terms of library operations, we did hold our Staff Development Day, our in-service, that was on April 22nd, or 26th. We had some speakers on mental health and self-resilience, safety and de-escalation, service animals and therapy dogs, and some breakout sessions on education, personal health, and craft. So, it was a really good day, well-attended by staff. And then, thank you also to Steve Malavika for attending as well. Based on staff suggestions for what we can do to make coming into work more pleasant, we did partner with Logo Pro, which is a local company based in Bettendorf. So, we have an online shop now for staff to purchase the library-branded clothing. And I shared that with the board as well, and you're welcome to do that, which is pretty exciting to be able to start getting some more items that are branded. We do have a pretty significant service interruption, and that is with our interlibrary loan service through Mobius. So, we had previously mentioned that Mobius is in the process of migrating from their current integrated library system, or ILS, to a new one. And we're part of that consortium. And so, they were planning, that took it offline starting on April 18th, and they were planning on launching May 22nd, tomorrow. However, they've informed us that that's not going to happen at this point. So, that means that, just for clarification on that, that's not the Rivershore Libraries Consortium. So, we still have interlibrary loan service within the 11 libraries here in the Quad Cities on the Iowa side. But the Mobius network is the process that we use when we borrow outside of our area, outside of our region. Those are the ones that we're using to get elsewhere. And that gives us access to hundreds of thousands of materials for patrons. And unfortunately, that's been out of service since the last month or so. We are working, we have a team internally working on coming up with a plan. So, hopefully, tomorrow, they'll be able to launch to the public still an opportunity to continue with interlibrary loan service. We're doing something kind of on the back end, and we're no guarantee it's going to work 100%, but we're going to try to do something so that we can still get those books for patrons that really want them, that we don't have and that are not in our region. So, it's going to be kind of a, I think they're there with matchsticks and duct tape and glue on some of the fun things. Are there any questions on any of that? It's a little bit confusing.
Yeah, I mean, I've used Mobius in the past, and I did notice recently it's not there anymore.
That's correct.
So, I was wondering, so is it coming to that?
That's the plan, yeah. We, they're in the process of converting to a new platform called Open RS, which is short for resource sharing. However, they're not at that point yet. They told us that on May 22nd, it would be ready for launch, and that would still be through Mobius. However, it's not the case yet.
But you think that program will be, it's just, it's not May 22nd?
They told us June 12th.
Oh, okay.
But right now, what we're telling patrons is coming soon. So, in the meantime, we are trying to work on something behind the scenes to still provide that service. We did partner with Stride Autism Center. So, we do have a partnership with them now for monthly deposit collection of items, as well as sharing items from our Thousand Books Before Kindergarten Program. We are also just wrapped up the process of hiring some summer staff through the CBVG Federal Funds, that's Community Development Quad Grant. So, we're going to be able to hire four part-time employees that are going to work during the summer to go to various community events and locations to get the Owl and the library out into the public more areas. So, that's pretty exciting. Staff also attended the Center for Active Seniors, Senior Services Fair and signed up some new patrons there. The Owl is at the Freight House, the second Saturday of each month during the summer. So, it's a really well-attended event, obviously. Last, the first one that they attended last week and the week before was very well-attended and issued a lot of library cards. We did partner with the American Arch Cross to host a community blood drive at Eastern. And this was actually their first blood drive in the Davenport area in many years. So, we're excited about that. And their account manager shared that the total units of blood donated can save up to 45 lives. And it was pretty incredible for the first time being back after a few years. They were real thankful for us hosting.
So, wait, is that because previously it had been Impact Life?
Impact Life still has a presence here as well. It was primarily because the Red Cross focused on the Illinois side, and there was a different branch, the way it's broken out, that was in Dubuque, and they were not often in the Quad Cities area. But there's a massive shortage of blood donations nationwide. In fact, there's been a significant decrease in people that are actually donating at a time where it's decreased from about 5% of the population to 3%, while at the same time, there've been a number of FDA regulations that have increased the pool of people that are eligible. It's gone from 40% of the American population to 60%, 60, 63% that are eligible to donate. So, it's kind of this inverse graph and a big issue. So, we're doing what we can to try and help that in the community. Catherine Wayland, our Special Collection Supervisor, attended the Midwest Archives Conference Annual Meeting, and then she co-presented a poster session with the archivist at St. Ambrose, Annika Marquez. And that was a real well-attended event. So, it was real great to see Catherine out at that event as well to represent the library. We did host attendees from Davenport U and Citizens Academy. That was last Monday, and that was a great event, too. Lexi and I presented information about the library, then we gave tours of Maine Library. We hit the Owl and Special Collections and the Makerspace, where we had an event going on. So, it was really great. We got a lot of positive comments. There were a lot of library employees that helped contribute to that and learning to listen here as well. We're real excited to be able to do that and help out the city in that respect. Today, Lexi's unable to attend this meeting because she's actually going to be presenting right now for the Scott County Regional Authority. They're hosting their spring funding announcement news conference, and they reached out to us to see if we could host that. So, it's at Eastern right now. And then, they also asked if we could give an update on the Enhanced Youth Spaces Project, which they are, which she's doing right now. So.
They did part of that, I guess.
They did, yeah. We received, I don't want to miss, approximately 150,000 from them. But I don't want that on the record, because I don't remember the exact amount. It was a substantial amount, though. There are a couple of library stories that are listed in the Director's Report. I do want to spotlight a couple of upcoming programs and events as well. So, I had previously sent an invitation for the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the story walk at Lafayette Park. That'll be this Thursday at 3:00 PM. So, anybody is welcome to attend. If possible, it'd be great to have somebody or somebodies from the board there for ribbon-cutting and maybe to share a few remarks. Summer Reading is going to kick off, starting with Bubble Palooza. That'll be on June 1st. Summer Reading does go this year for the entire summer. So, it's June, July, and August. We have a local author that's going to be tomorrow doing a presentation, and her name is X. H. Collins. And this is part of our Asian American Pacific Islanders Month Celebration, which is pretty cool. We're also excited to launch the Kids Advisory Board. As you know, for many years, we've had a Teen Advisory Board. Now, we're going to drop down a little bit younger. So, this will be for kiddos between the ages of seven and 10. And they're going to meet once a month to discuss all things that are related to the library. They'll have an opportunity to share ideas for future children's programming, make suggestions for items to add to the collection, and then participate in some service projects as well. So, we're really excited about getting that up and running. And then, the QC History Hop is going to be on June 5th. This is the first of a couple of these, and that is a really great opportunity to see some of the Quad Cities. There are a couple of other programs on here for your identification. I did pass around some marketing materials as well, some recent ones. We'll take a look at those and pass those along, some of the great work that our team is doing. And I would have, you happy to answer any questions about the report?
Thank you, Jeff. Next item under Committee Reports is Council Liaison. Marion?
Yeah, I'm just, just tell a few things. You guys heard about the approval, IDA approval. This project is Meta, which is Facebook. It's a server farm. It is not done. They have to do finalize their due diligence. But it is very significant because it is so huge. And that we will, we think we will know whether it's to go sometime this fall. It's 300 acres out in the research park or in the, in the business park. It's an $800 million project, which dwarfs Amazon, anything else. The, with, they've asked for some tax incentives, which we're giving in this case. Even with those in the first year, it's over $2 million in revenue directly to the City of Davenport. It's huge. So, in any case, so if you've seen that, that's where it is, a little bit confusing. We had to approve something, we had to approve an application to the state, an IDA application of a particular program. And then, last, Friday, IDA, Iowa Economic Development Authority were met and approved it. So, now, it's in the balls in Meta's court. And so, this has been something that's been in the works for months. And so, it's very exciting, and it is, it's not, they've talked about, sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I just say?
Sorry. They talked about, you know, they've told us 50 employees, but it's not about the number of employees so much as, you know, the potential revenue to the city. Because, I mean, server farms don't need, they don't need a lot of employees, but it's very kind of high-end, you know, it's, you know, well-paid employees, for sure. So, in any case, that's exciting. And the, our search is underway for the new city manager. I have the search firm, the gentleman who has the search firm that we selected was here last week interviewing staff, City Council members, members of, members of the Search Committee, which I'm a member of. And so, we will, again, he has said we'd have someone by September 1st. He's also doing the search for proper council as well. So, the same firm is doing that search. Party in the Park, the June dates are the 14th, I think. And that's in Wayland Park up in the northwest, on the Northwest Boulevard. And then, the 26th is Lindsay Park. I know the libraries are always there. Lindsay will be a new park for us, and I will be there. Let's see, the Martin Luther King Interpretive Center Park is being dedicated on 3 o'clock on June 19th. It was earlier than May, and that was the, that was the day that, you know, Armageddon was hitting, but it didn't hit here. And so, in any case, it hit elsewhere in Hyatt, but we were very lucky. Anyway, 6:19, 3 o'clock, and so that's nearby. And the last thing I wanted to call your attention is the City of Davenport, we got an update last week at our management update meeting about ARPA funding, which is the funding, the $46 million that came through the pandemic. Part of it was Fairmont Library, for the library, Fairmont Library, the, you know, the social worker. So, those are some of the things that came out of where that, some of that money went. So, this is, we have to have everything under contract by the end of 2024, and we're well on our way to that. Things aren't finished, but they're moving forward. They don't have to be finished, they have to be under contract. And so, we got an update because one of the things that, you know, there are very specific things that ARPA funds could be used for. It could be used for roads, it could be used for this, it could be used for that. And so, we used it properly, so we had no problems with any of the projects that we had proposed. And those are moving along. But one of the things that allowed us to do was to invest the money. So, we are now looking at something over $2 million in interest. And there's a reason why I'm telling you, this from this ARPA funding that is non-restricted. So, there are no restrictions on this money. So, and I can't remember, the number's about 2.4 million, I think. So, the city is going to be looking at, what are we going to, what are we going to do with this? And to that point, one of the things they're doing is around June 1st, there will be a public survey for people living in Davenport for recommendations of what they would like to see the money used for. That will be part of what is used then. It'll come back to council and staff, and that'll be part of the decision-making as where this money goes.
How will that survey be taken?
Online. They're always taking it online. That's the way we do surveys. So, it's, so I haven't seen the survey, and I'm not, you know, I will certainly see the results. In any case, I wanted to let everybody I knew that had anything to do with anything I care about know about it. Because, you know, and I don't know that, I'm not sure that, I mean, it will not be the total sum. It's not like a boat. But if there are things, I mean, there are big things out there. There's the Trurlan Fund in Junior Theater thing, you know, there's, you know, other things out there. And so, I don't know if it will be used for one thing, it'll be several things, and that hasn't been determined by the city. So, but I wanted to let you know about the survey, and the city will be sending it out through its social media, you know, notifications. So, think about it, if there's something, you know, you'd like to seek with the library, you know, tell friends and family, because, you know, usually when we do these surveys, it's a tiny number of people who take them. So, you know, if you want to, you know, might help call attention to something that, you know, might be.
So. Would your expectation be that the types of projects that would be funded from that investment game would be one-off, right?
I don't know that. I don't know if there'll be one big thing, or it'll be.
But I mean, it would be a one, it would be like.
Yes, a project.
A capital improvement, not funding a position.
Exactly.
Because it's a windfall.
Yes, exactly. Yes, exactly. That's the very good way. That's what I would assume, that it would be, you know, dealing with a certain thing. And I'm not saying we would use it for this, but we could not use any of the ARPA funding really for roads. Well, like, this can be used for roads, you know, if, again, I don't, you know, if, I don't know if people, that's what people would want. But I'm trying to give you, there were things that could be done with ARPA funding, and this is, those are, those funds are unrestricted. Those, and we look like we will be fine in terms of the ARPA funds we have and how we've distributed them. Some are already done, and there's, many are still in process. But there, we have a year after the, everything I think is under contract. We have a year after to finish all the ARPA projects. So, the December 1st, 2024, everything has to be under contract. But not the special money, not the section.
Because that has an restriction.
Yes, exactly. So.
Something for us to.
Yeah, please tell me about it, you know. I'm giving you fair warning here.
Thank you for that survey.
Yes.
So, this is a survey that'll be available online?
It'll be available online. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
I just wanted to kind of share with you, I don't know it personally. I saw it on TV. It was a CBS report, and it was a server farm. And it was such horrendous noise. I mean, I kid you not. The visible and the visible readings of what was happening and things like that, that, I mean, just an alert. And it was much smaller to what you just shared with us. And the people around have now sued the city.
Oh, okay.
You know which city it was?
Yes, I think it was, and I will, I will revert back to you.
Okay.
And find out, because I saw it on 60, I think it was 60 Minutes, and it was a CBS investigation.
Okay.
And I kid you not, it was like, oh, I'm not going to be anywhere close to finding it, too. It was tremendous.
Right.
And they got it in because of, I think, Oklahoma, I think. Because they gave a lot of repaints and things like that, just FYI. I just wanted to share it before. I don't want to be negative, but I wanted to share.
They take a tremendous amount of energy, too. I just emailed my admin. We just did, I just was on a research call, and I asked if I could. Yes. It's like, it's like the size of small countries, like.
Yeah, and I think, and I think they have been dealing with Minamere, you know, they've done all their.
Right, right. I think they're going solar or something, for the energy part of.
I don't know that. I don't know that, but.
But I'll share with you more after I find out.
That's fine. It is out in the cornfields right now, right here, you know. So, it's, it is, you know, on its own site.
Of course, of course.
It is 300 acres, and it doesn't cover. I mean, I saw a plan. It doesn't cover the 300 acres, so I don't know. But certainly something to do with that.
Thank you. Marion? Just wanted to back up a little bit. There's something in Jeff's report. Davenport U, I think I said this before, but just want to amplify it. If you get an opportunity, you know, for Davenport U, please sign up. It's a, it's a, it's a real experience to find out things that go in, go on in the City of Davenport, behind the scenes that are, you know, if nothing else, you have an opportunity, or at least we did, last session of classes before the current ones, to put on firefighter turnout gear, you know, completely. I had no idea how much that stuff weighed. Boots, the whole works, and then drag an inch and a half hose into a building that they. Boots, the whole works, and then drag an inch and a half hose into a building that they filled with fake smoke and discharge this hose.
Yeah.
It's really give you an opportunity if you ever get it otherwise, unless you want to jump fire department.
I second that, because I did the first Davenport U, which was seven years ago, and I truly am was amazed. So yes, it's wonderful.
And I third that, I did it also after I came on council. It was a great introduction, but it's, it's really, it's pretty neat. They make it very interactive. It's not sitting there blah, 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 like, you know, the class. It's very interactive.
They gave us homework every once in a while.
Yes. I don't think they do that anymore.
I don't think so.
But you can, you get to shoot at people too. That's gonna be us, or get shot at and miss.
Yeah.
Or get shot.
Next item on the agenda then, as we've amended it, will be new business, which is the discussion and motion to extend the administrative policy prohibiting employees from carrying a firearm to also cover security contractors. Let me see. Oh, okay. Um, it's typically my preference to discuss items at one meeting and dig action in the next meeting, but this was felt to be something we needed to address more quickly. So that is why we're handling both same, same meeting. And likewise, because of that, I think we'll just open it up to discussion first and then have a motion later. So back to one I.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. So there are a couple of memos, there are two memos and one letter in your board packet. Apologize for any confusion that I might have gotten from this, been a developing situation. The first memo is dated May 16th, the next one is May 20th, after we had meetings with Global. And there's a letter including your packet too that was dated May 20th for that. So a little bit of background to make sure that everybody's fully up to speed. The library does contract with a private company to provide security services. And in late 2022, the city issued an RFP and a bid process that resulted in a new service provider, and that's Global Security Services. Global has provided adequate service over the last 18 months with some security officers providing mid to low level work and one officer providing really exceptional service, and that is the most recent security officer. In late March, the current security officer started wearing a firearm while on duty, and that was unexpected for the library as previously, we've always had unarmed security, including with this current contract, three of the four Global Guards have reported to duty unarmed. So at that point, administration requested information from Global regarding their firearms training, use of force policies and liability insurance. And then we also reached out to City Legal and City Risk for some guidance. In response to whether a firearm was allowed, City Legal did state that the security guard is a contractor and may not be required to comply with the city's administrative policy. That administrative policy is also in your packet, that is 3.12 workplace violence. And that prohibits city employees, which includes library employees, from carrying or concealing any kind of dangerous weapon, which is defined in that list as a firearm. Uh, the city attorney also said they do not see anything in the library's behavior policy that would prohibit a security guard from carrying a weapon, which is also true. In the past, that was part of the policy where we had made it, there was a prohibition for any member of the public to come to the library with a firearm. And we did that because we had the Creative Arts Academy here. And there was a separate statute in Iowa that said you couldn't have a weapon at that time, a firearm at a school or within 300 yards from the school. Obviously, that's no longer the case and that law has changed as well. And obviously Creative Arts Academy is not here. Uh, so they said whether the library's security guard can carry a firearm is a decision for the library board. If the board takes no action to prohibit such action, it's their opinion that the library's security guard can carry a firearm. So we also reached out to City Risk, as I mentioned, and they were extremely helpful. At that time, they had expressed concern that there was not adequate liability insurance. General liability insurance workers come up with, only really protected the security officer if they were injured on the job. This is kind of no longer relevant, so I just wanted to make that out so that we're aware of that and we'll come back to that in a minute. And so based on those concerns at the time and some recent actions involving the security officer, I chose to prohibit the gun immediately rather than wait until this meeting for you to decide. Anecdotally, a high number of employees have expressed that they don't feel comfortable having armed security. However, employees that are either neutral or in support, might not have thought to share their opinions. We didn't do any kind of polling or anything like that. And that was a small factor in our, my decision to prohibit the gun. So we informed Global not to carry the firearm on May 3rd and the security officer reported to work the rest of that week and the following week, and continued to do a great job. They did request from their employer to get reassigned to a new area.
Oh, current security guard, yeah.
Correct, yeah. And so they, so beginning the week of May 13th, we've been without security coverage since then. And I gotta skip past that because we're down to May 20th of memo. So on Friday, Casey and I were able to meet with the president of Global Security Services, Brad, Brad's here with us today, so we'll hear some thoughts as well. And then representatives from City HR, City Risk and City Purchasing. And again, City Risk, Kelly Shook is here. Um, City Risk is no longer, has the concerns that they had previously expressed, because Global was able to provide them with documentation to meet that minimum general liability insurance and listed the city of Davenport as additional insurance. So from their perspective, as I understand it, there's no concerns from a, from a risk perspective at all. At this point, Global hasn't been able to provide security service since May 13th. They're scrambling to try to get somebody in to help cover. They have expressed that they might not be able to hire someone in a timely manner. Part of that is the concern, well, I'll let Brad speak to that on their concerns. Uh, if they're unable to fill the terms of the contract, we'll probably end up having to go out to bid for another security contractor. The important thing that I want to say for this as well is that I don't think that allowing armed security at the library is the right call at this time. But of course, administration will 100% support that call if the board does determine that we should provide armed security. A couple of other things for reference, security is not expected to, they're really expected to monitor and inform patrons and then to, many times there's a violation of a behavior policy or if there are safety concerns, to make sure they're passing those along and then to contact the appropriate authorities. So there's not really an expectation from administration for them to have any hands-on or physical with patrons at all. So our, my recommendation is to have a motion to extend this administrative policy that prohibits employees from carrying a firearm at libraries also cover security contractors.
I need to understand that the, the security guard left because he couldn't carry a firearm.
That's correct, yeah.
He has to be reassigned, so it's effective.
Yeah, well, I think Brad could speak better on that, yeah. Correct. So I guess the, yes, this is the answer to your question. We primarily provide armed security. We have approximately 100 employees, of those maybe eight are unarmed. We specialize in armed security for mostly government military installations. You know, our training standards are second to none. Most people who aspire to be in this field, you know, are armed. Obviously, there are some people that are, that are gun shy, but I guess it's, it's, I would argue is the equivalent of a police officer. As far as, you know, skills and training, they meet the, they go through Henry Law Enforcement Firearms. They're required to qualify on the Iowa Law Enforcement Accounting Course Fire. There, there's proficiency, as far as some of the, the previous security officers that were unarmed. Two of those were waiting on licensing because of course Illinois is a much more arduous process than Iowa. And the other one didn't meet our experience requirements to be armed. But obviously, we wanted to make sure that the, the library had, you know, some coverage. The officer questioned, who by all accounts did an exemplary job, flatly said he does not want to work in an armed capacity and people of that caliber candidly don't, especially in an environment such as this. While the expectation is not to necessarily intervene in things, that's not always our choice. Because obviously with mental illness and, you know, some of the people that we get to deal with who are in the fringe society, don't give us that option. And anyone in this capacity typically wants to be armed, not only for their own safety, but for the safety of those they're expected to protect. And I expressed at our last meeting that finding somebody, if we are absolutely restricted to unarmed, it's going to hinder our ability to hire, which is already a very big challenge in this current environment. So it, one, it will definitely come at a greater expense, because I can already tell you we're, we're struggling to find people at the current pay rate, let alone to then say that, you know, they're, they're prohibited from carrying firearms. I think, I think that's going to make it much worse. And that's why we're kind of in the current position that we are now. We promoted the individual, he's moved on to a career path with us, but obviously we have to hire outright. Yes, ma'am.
So to make sure I'm understanding correctly, you have the security contract for the library through the city. And then when you post the position to, within, you know, the people that you're, that are employed by you, when they're applying, they know specifically this is an unarmed currently, this is an unarmed security position at the downtown Davenport Library location.
Well, right now, we don't advertise it as unarmed, but yes, if, if you guys prohibit arms, then we have to advertise that it's an unarmed position and that's just, when people come, I guess, we're known for armed security. I mean, that's kind of our expertise, that's our reputation. We've been in business 25 years. So it's, it's kind of unarmed is kind of a departure for us in the first, but to answer your question, yes, we have to advertise it as unarmed and then that, it limits the people who are available or interested in working in that field.
More importantly, my, my point of clarification is that the, the location of the security assignment is known to the applicants.
No.
Okay, that's what I thought, I didn't.
No, 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 we don't specifically say you're hiring for the Davenport Library. It's, we're hiring, but then in the interview process, we do share that information because we want to make sure it's going to be a good fit. We communicate expectations, work hours, you know, location. I mean, everybody wants to know where they're going to be working. It's not a, share off a word for you and then you surprise me with a warm-up meeting. So while it's not advertised in, you know, on the deed, it is part of the conversation.
So I have two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
How long has Global Security Services been employed by the library, contracted with the library? And, and it was unarmed, it was an unarmed position until recently, so how long? And do we have any security at any other branches that are armed or unarmed?
So the answer to the second question first, right now, we currently only have security at Main Library downtown, not at the other.
Okay.
And the first question, the contract was executed around December 2022 and then went in, into effect right around there. And this is where a lot of the miscommunication I think has come down. Is Global was approaching it as we do armed security and we were not fully aware that they do armed security.
But the, but their person was unarmed.
Correct, yeah. The first three of the four were unarmed until now, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that, and this person showed up with no discussion, it sounds like, with the firearm?
We weren't aware of it, yeah.
Is that what happened?
Yeah.
A nude person that showed up?
No, he, he's in, yeah, he's in. So that's part of where.
This was actually the.
Mostly it's driven by licensing processes. They're, they're, they're slow and while they go through all the training and whatnot, until they're actually licensed to carry, they're, they're prohibited from carrying. So they, they get placed and they start working and then as soon as the license is, is approved, then they begin carrying firearms. And to answer your question, the bid was for the entire city, it wasn't just the library. And again, in our bid document, we clearly say, we specialize in armed security, this is what we do. And frankly, this is what the city wanted, was an armed presence, not just, not necessarily for the library, but we do all the parking garages, the ground transportation center, we deal with a lot, you know, for the city. We also do all of their courier services, which is all armed. So from our perspective, it's, hey, we were tapped to do this job, we're not an unknown quantity. In fact, we were brought in because I believe the current provider was not meeting expectations and it was a very quick run and done kind of thing, like, hey, they're given us X number of days.
I said, don't put a ten, I need to.
Yeah, don't put a ten. Skip question, I'm sorry.
So we are also a known quantity as a library and we have a policy that prohibits firearms.
But actually, that's not, that's not correct.
No, we do not.
No, yeah, by law, Iowa changed the law. Public facilities have to allow people to enter unless you provide armed security and magnetometers.
But there wasn't a thought on your part to kind of check with us and see like, maybe this wasn't a fit for the library? I, I'm just.
Candidly, no, because again, we specialize in armed security. All of our bid doc says this is who we are and what we do and how we do it. We were awarded the contract, there was no prohibition, you know, clarified to us, so.
I think that makes sense. I mean, that, that order of operations makes sense from the way that I operate in the corporate environment and the way that I understand the city to operate. I think we need to focus on the question in front of us now, is getting information about what do we want the experience to be upstairs in the, for our staff, for our patrons, for the security presence? And what are our options? Like, I think we need to be forward focused right now.
I just like to make sure I, I'm operating with the right.
Well, and I wish I would have brought a picture, but I mean, the, the uniformed officer is an all black, please style uniform duty bell. I mean, if you didn't look at his patch, you'd often think, oh, that's a Davenport cop, as far as their appearance. I mean, they're, you know, this is not, these people aren't just picked off the street to have to have experience requirements. They, they go through background checks, they go through extensive, oh.
We know who he is, we're all here.
So I don't know if you will see a picture, but it's potentially, you know, so I mean, just for clarification, it's, I mean, I understand where there may be some apprehension, but we're not just plucking people off the street and saying, here's a gun, go stand in, in the library. I mean, we've been in business 25 years, again, we specialize in, in government contracting, providing this level of service all across the country. I, I don't see that, I guess a library is nothing unique to us, I guess.
So I, you said something, and I may have heard it wrong, so if, and maybe somebody else knows, I don't, I didn't know this, that as a, in a state law no longer prohibits people, they can, they, they have the right to carry a gun into any public building?
Correct, the state of Iowa.
Okay, unless there is, sorry, not a school, unless there is, unless there is armed security on duty.
Yeah, so the state passed a law saying, so obviously people have the right to keep and bear arms. The, the prohibition on arms in public was recently changed. And the law says you cannot by law prohibit a law-abiding citizen from carrying a firearm onto public grounds unless you go to the extraordinary step of providing armed security and magnetometers so that you can assure every single person in that building is in fact unarmed. And there's somebody there to provide for the safety and welfare of those patrons that are in there, because since you've stripped them of their right to, to bear arms, now you are responsible for their security. So that's, that's the law.
So is it better to have one or whoever wants? Or, I mean, that's a question, but we don't have the magnetometer either.
And we, by the way, could do that if you guys decide to vote and put magnetometers at the front door. We could screen everybody in. We, we've done that at courthouses, we've, we've done that at other facilities, but obviously now you're, you're, you're changing the experience altogether. I don't think that's an area that the library would. And I don't, and I, I think that would be.
It's $20 million. It's deep sarcasm, deep sarcasm.
And again, I don't, I'm not recommending that, but I'm saying, and it's a service we provide. But, and, and to your point, I mean, if you're going to allow the public to come in armed, why would you prohibit your security contractor who might have to interact with them to force them to be armed? And again, we're not talking about just, we don't pluck people off the street and say, here, go, go interact with the public. I mean, these are trained professionals and, and by our own standards, one was not armed because they didn't meet the requirements that we set for ourselves. I mean, we, we take, we take what we do quite serious. We've been in business 25 years. Our, our success is literally built on our reputation. We're not the cheapest bidder or the best bidder. So, and I, and I don't mean to sound cocky, but I mean, it's 25 years of excellence in doing what we do for government installations, military bases. I mean, we take it pretty serious. So I guess my, my point is to assuage any concerns that, you know, these are just somebody you wouldn't want carrying a firearm. I, I'm in that same boat. If I don't deem them worthy and professional enough and their, and their skills, handling and experience, they don't, that's not an option. Hence why it's so hard to hire people, by the way.
So just the, 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 the people at Genesis, the hospital, are they armed? I don't know, just their reason.
I believe they are, yes.
Okay. I don't remember.
I think it's a combination. I think they have, I think they hire off-duty cops and then I think they're.
They are, they have off-duty cops, but their security, unless it's changed very recently, do not carry a firearm.
But my daughter works at Genesis and they do not carry a firearm.
No, okay.
Off-duty, this one's.
Yeah, off-duty officer.
That's a different conversation.
Yeah, I'm just asking.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, right.
I will say that having dealt with the magnetron situation back when I was in the council, back when we were changing the civil rights organs, there was threats of violence. And so every council meeting, that's what it, you went through, went through that. It was different, but I don't think it was. It was different, but I don't think it was really anything much different than, say, the current system we have at the front door where you have to go through that gate.
But I don't think we're considering that.
Well, I'm just saying that as if that was a part of the discussion, I don't think that the general public would not have generally any issues coming through that.
I think I disagree with that.
Yeah.
Well, I, again, I don't know what the process is today. I'm talking about back in 2000.
Yeah, I think that's not part of our conversation.
Amanda, do you have any questions or comments?
No, just following along for now.
Okay.
You said you were back.
Yes, I had a question. Well, both of you. Brad, you said something about that if we don't have armed security in a building that allows, that's will allow people to come in carrying weapons, firearms, that we're taking on additional. We have.
The law, the law says that if you prohibit patrons from carrying firearms in a public facility, that you would have to provide armed security and magnetometers at the door to screen everyone in to ensure no one has arms. And then obviously, the point of that is so that there's security to protect them should something horrific happen, active shooter, workplace violence, whatever, there's armed security to respond. Because you've literally restricted their right to bear arms. So now you take on that burden of their security, why they're in your public.
Steve, real quick to clarify, right now, we, Main Library is open 53 hours a week, and Global's providing 32 or 40?
Forty.
Forty hours of security right now. We actually have the budget to increase it a little bit more, but they've been unable to fill the additional slots or so. But that would be a significant increase in cost if we had to have somebody posted at the door in addition to.
And typically, it would be two, just for clarification.
Exactly, yeah. I mean, exponentially increasing.
Every facility there where we work on magnetometer, we have two, one to basically, because you're, I mean, you have to stream things in. I mean, think about a courthouse and the process going in there. That's essentially what that would be. And obviously, that would be, I'd love to do it if you guys go that way, but that would actually be a pretty big investment.
Yeah, and frankly, I don't think it's necessary. I mean, I, not just the cost, it would be a big concern, but what that demonstrates to the public would be a bigger concern.
Exactly.
I agree, it would definitely be unique. Can I answer that question?
Yeah, I think so. So then are we at greater risk liability?
So we currently do allow citizens to carry in public buildings. Employees are not, so we have not taken on any of that liability. If we were to follow and restrict it, we would be taking on additional liability.
Meaning?
Meaning we would be if we, we would take on the liability for the patrons inside the building.
Oops. Well, that's a huge thing that you're saying. That's like huge, like that's like if we add that into the conversation, then we're having a different conversation. So I.
I'm here for just the black and white part of it.
Well, I want the information about that because that's going to matter, I think, to all of us as to how we make this decision.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that seems.
Well, and I guess to clarify from liability, you know, we're fully insured. Our general liability policy, we're, I mean.
It's not about you, it's about her. It's not about you, it's about saying we will take on additional responsibility. If we do not have.
It's because it's like.
I know, but I want to know, well, what does that mean?
If we prohibit people from carrying and do not offer the armed security and what is it called? The mag.
Magnetometer.
Right.
So we prohibit a security guard who's there.
No, 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 if we prohibit citizens from.
But we're not talking about good enough. You're not letting your finish.
Excuse me.
If we prohibit citizens from being able to carry, then in order to not have to take on the liability of that, we would have to place the two armed guards at the front with the magnet. Yeah, sorry.
But to answer your question, you could restrict your contractor, yes, without increased liability. Although I would, although I would argue you are increasing your liability because the whole point of armed security is to protect. I mean, let's, let's be completely frank. This is all academic until somebody walks through that door with a gun, hell bet on shooting people. And then the only person that's going to stop that is a good guy with a gun. Whether you like to hear that or not, that's the reality.
Brad, I'm 78 years old. I've traveled the world, I live south of Locust Street. There has never been one time in my entire life where I wished I had a gun or I wished someone else in the room had a gun, even when. Even, am I? Even when someone in rural Scott County pulled a gun on my husband and me because we were watching the stars apparently on their property, never even then. And for me, and we, I mean, you're a good businessman. I can tell that. I can tell you are passionate, you care, you have quality. I can tell all that about you. And so that's, you know, yes, I totally give you that. But my concern is, this is my last one, pre meeting, so I'm going over the back of the chair. After 10 years, after. I'm fully intended, fully intended. I have concerns about the proliferation of firearms in our society as a way to solve a problem. It seems like we have potential concerns about what might happen in a library or we have potential concerns about what might happen in schools or we have potential concerns about what might happen at the grocery store. So then the answer to that is let's arm people. And I just, I feel like people who come to the library, this is not the venue where they want to see armed guards. I'm sorry, I don't think they feel threatened by coming here. They wouldn't come here if they did. And so to me, like, I remember one time I was in Ecuador. I got off, I started walking around Quito, and on every corner, there was someone with a rifle. I mean, they were the state police. So I say to my friend, do you feel safer? Oh, no, we did not feel safer. We felt very.
Ecuador to the Davenport Library.
I'm just, I'm, but I'm just saying, like, to me, guns don't make me feel safer. And I don't, and I am not, I'm not alone in that. And some of the things that you assert in your documents are, are yours.
Like what?
You have your evidence that people are safer if someone has a gun. No.
And my worldview in 25 years and almost two decades in law enforcement, being an active shooter instructor for law enforcement, NRA law enforcement firearms instructor, a guy who's been in numerous armed encounters, I would say, I would strongly disagree. Everybody has their own opinion and you're certainly entitled to it, but.
I, I'm looking for the research on that.
So Sylvia, to add in, literally is what I wrote, citation, question mark. And again, you're in a library, you're with library trustees. This is a very nuanced conversation. You're with a lot of cerebral academic people that also really care. We all care for the community, we all care for this institution. We have a lot of questions to consider, but I just want to make sure we're dealing with facts and not opinions.
Was, was the security guard who wants to be armed, was it a concealed carry or was it out in the open?
No, it's on a duty bell, just similar to, I mean, if you want to pass that.
Could that be an issue that could be addressed if it was a concealed carry?
How does that matter?
That would, well, it may have.
People are not seeing the gun.
It's a pragmatic argument.
I'm just answering the question.
You need to be pragmatic about this.
I mean, I'm armed right now and you can't tell. I mean, yes, we could do that.
I was just going to ask that question if you were coming here armed.
I don't need the house without a gun, ma'am.
I think it's important to note that the other locations that Global services for the city, they are all armed. So this would be the only location that Global services on the two contracts where they would be unarmed. Again, I'm speaking in black and white facts. I'm not taking an opinion on anything.
Right.
I'm just putting the facts out there.
And those locations, again, are parking garages.
Parking garages, yeah.
Where we deal with, the same people we deal with here.
Yep, and they.
Homeless, drug-addled, mental illness. I mean, we found how many needles in this building? There was just a case where an individual that was fleeing from the police fled in here, who was involved in a domestic assault, our employee ended up arresting him because he basically, from my understanding, attacked him on the way in. So I mean, while I appreciate Sylvia, where you come from, we live in different worlds. I mean.
No, actually, we live in the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, we.
You get to call somebody to deal with the problem, we're the ones that actually have to deal with the problem.
I don't necessarily call people to deal with the problem. You know, someone in my neighborhood is having a dispute and they, I talk to them as opposed to calling the police because when that happens in my neighborhood, other things happen.
That could very well end in your assault and.
It's.
You're braver than most, let me tell you that.
My question, whether it's to use Steve or Jeff, why do we have a security officer here in the library? Why do we have a security officer?
And not no, and not no.
We don't have it at Fairmont, we don't have it at Eastern. Why do we have downtown? What is our expectation of a person who's here as a security officer?
Historically speaking, this location has the most number of incidents and contact reports. And so we want to try to make sure that we have a safe environment as we can for the public and for staff while they're here. And one of the ways we accomplish that historically is by having a security officer presence, a security presence. And again, it's not all hours that we're open either. It's generally targeted during busier times, Tuesdays through Saturdays. And at times when we don't have administration for librarians in charge or other supervisors that are on site as well.
Have our security officers experienced upper events to secure this building? Or does the security officer, for the most part, just stand around doing very little?
It depends on the security provider and the specific security officer, in my experience.
But yes, they have had incidents, they've had arrests, they've had drugs, alcohol.
Have any of the incidents required use of firearms?
Thankfully, no, but it certainly could have escalated. No, but we haven't had a shooting here.
Well, the security officer can't arrest anybody. They have to call police, correct?
That's not accurate.
I was curious about your comment. You said the, the security officer arrested the person that was fleeing from the police. Can I hear a little bit more about that language?
804.9 Iowa code allows arrest by private person. 804, or 80410 allows use of force to arrest by private person. So they're well within the law to, to use reasonable and necessary force to effectuate an arrest for a crime attempted or committed in their presence. Now, obviously, we have use of force policies and, and we go through a great deal of training to make sure that that's obviously handled correctly. But in this particular situation, and I'm going off memorization, so please don't, please don't quote me exactly, but from my understanding, the individual was fleeing from Davenport Police Department for a domestic assault where he was beating the heck out of his female acquaintance, fled in here and encountered our officer at the door, and they had a tussle, and he was subsequently arrested by our officer. And had he not been here, God only knows what that individual would have done. If he would have just came in here and hid, if he would have taken hostages, you know, barricaded himself and all, God only knows. That didn't happen because there was an officer here and it was no.
There's a lot of alarmism going on right now. And to answer your question, Michael, historically, what the expectation is, is to walk around and enforce the behavior policy, which is established by the library and board trustees. And that is, for example, sleeping. So it might be, most of what they're doing is walking around and making sure everybody's alive, that they're awake, that they're okay, checking on them, and then enforcing that policy. Very rarely does it escalate into a higher situation, but that does occur as well.
And I guess where I'm going with my questions, obviously, you provide a service in extreme situations. You say you've experienced it yourself. It's not a either or, it's not a plus or a minus situation. It's not as though there's no gun, there's only guns. Rather, there's a range of other options in between there. When you need a gun, you need a gun, no question about that. But I'm not sure that, I guess I'm asking, are there possibilities of having these trained officers have devices other than a gun?
They do.
That could be used.
Instead of.
Instead of, in other words, it sounds like the people that we're dealing with here at this library are sometimes having mental issues, maybe social issues, other kinds of issues that they're agitated. And I know that our staff has training to de-escalate. And I've seen the staff here talking with people that have years to de-escalate without a gun. But, but if they are confronted by someone who is threatening, I think the library is causing this problem for me because I've watched enough stuff from Denzel Washington on your DVDs in which, in which, in which he is not using a gun. He uses it funny, but there are plenty of situations where it de-escalates situations. Do other techniques? Are any of the officers trained to control a situation with how you use a gun?
Of course. And just for clarification, they carry mace or OC, they have handcuffs, they have a baton. They have other tools in this, I mean, and I wanted to be clear, and I guess that picture has, they're not just armed, it's not one or another. A firearm is a tool, just like any other tool on their belt. And God forbid if they have to use it, that would be a horrific situation. And yes, they're trained to de-escalate and obviously, nobody wants to, to have to do that ultimate duty. But, you know, if you prohibit it, then it's not an option. At least, you know, it's, it's a tool. I mean, like, pointing out, we've dealt with lots of people sleeping. We've dealt with, you know, people doing drugs in the bathroom, people doing other things you don't want to know in the bathroom. It's, it's, it's a, it's a tool on their tool belt while they deal with all these things. It's not the only tool on their belt, it's not the first tool on their belt, it's the last tool of resort. God forbid if the worst happens. But it's what I, my, I guess, my, my point is if you prohibit it, you're going to limit the people that are willing to work in this environment who meet some of the expectations, I think, that, that you had of Mr. Luttrell, who did an excellent job by all accounts. I mean, he flatly said, I don't want to work on armed security. He's like, I'll give you guys a chance to work it out when it was made clear that that was an option. You know, we promoted him because we didn't want to lose him, so we later went to a different position. But there are people in this industry, in this field, that they just flatly don't want to work on armed. And if it's a prohibition, then they won't take the job. And that's going to mean more money from you folks to hire people because you're going to have to throw dollars at it. And I'm not saying I'm not willing to try, but I'm just telling you from my professional, you know, my professional opinion is you're, you're, you're limiting your options where I don't think you need to. Because here's the simple fact, Joe, public can walk in the building with a gun. Why do you care if your contractor? Like, if you're not going to prohibit the public, why would you prohibit your contractor? I just, I don't think that makes sense.
Well, I think it's the question on optics and the question on it couldn't be concealed. I mean, I think that's a valid question. You know, I feel really conflicted and I have a hard time with low 15. My brother is an armed security officer, so I certainly understand the value and the difficulties of that job. I also, as a trustee and as a patron and as a regular person at this library, know the challenges of some of the populations that we serve, but feel that is part of our community that we need to serve with compassion and kindness. But I understand the feelings that everyone else is having. This is so hard. I don't know.
I just want to talk to my fellow trustees here for a minute because I know we're all like super thoughtful caring and we want the best for our library and for our city. I didn't have a lot of chance to do a lot of research before I came today. But I did find that there are libraries who are putting on people who will help de-escalate things. They're not armed, they're not security personnel at all. They're people, they're adding more social workers, which we already have a social worker, like, working to help make a different kind of environment. That's a very different approach. That's what I discovered. And one of the things we always do, Steve, is we seem to check with other libraries, like in our cohort, you know, like Iowa City, Cedar Rapids. You know, what are they doing? What are, I mean, I couldn't find enough information about what other, this is a smaller area. It's not, you know, it's not. But kind of what is the, what is the norm? What's best practice? What have people found? I mean, this is one answer for sure. But are there other answers that we would all find, that we might find more acceptable to our own philosophy about what a library represents to the community? I'm just, I don't know, maybe we don't have time to even talk about that, but that seems like a direction I'd like to go.
So if we don't, sorry, guys, if we don't vote today, because I don't think we're in a position to make a decision. If we don't vote today, the temporary policy that Jeff put in place stays in place, correct?
Correct.
So that stays in place until we decide to change it effectively, right? Like, it didn't expire.
Correct.
Okay. I'm just thinking, this feels hard and complicated and I don't, I personally don't know if I'm ready to make a decision. I can certainly abstain from a vote. But to Sylvia's point, I think there's some other questions. There's some things that we all maybe need to be doing.
But we currently don't have a security officer here, right?
Right.
Which is the problem.
We don't have one at all. Right. Because the, the individual who's doing an excellent job and said he was not going to work. Because the the individual who's doing an excellent job, instead he was not going to work in an unarmed capacity, and instead of losing that employee, I promoted him and put him on a, basically, he's working Monday to Friday at five.
So I think what the board clearly needs to decide.
Previously unarmed, right? This is the same gentleman that was.
A hundred and twenty-four years this library has been in existence without armed security until March. So it's the board's decision whether you want to now have unarmed persons.
And yes, to answer your question, because he had a weightless license. He was trained and and he was hired as such, but until he gets his actual permit in hand.
This may be splitting hairs, but what's the timeline of how long he was here unarmed when he's, when we have that left?
Started in January and.
Oh, okay. I thought it was.
Late February, early March started carrying.
The other people who were.
Yeah, knew all those were unarmed, yeah, right.
And again, those.
But it's this one guy who has.
Four hundred.
One more question.
So if you had to resolve this, you could do a Zoom meeting, you could do a special meeting, right, as well? You have the ability to call a special meeting.
Sure.
By Zoom or whatever, I mean, I'm just trying to think.
Right, but when, when do we lose like half the board, I think that's the other.
That, well, the the board, we have one more meeting before we lose three of us.
Yeah.
Not half, but three.
Well, it feels like.
But you lose me today, this is my.
We would really appreciate it if this was possible.
This is my last meeting.
We're stuck in this limbo.
I'm leaving the country, but I'm.
I have a contract.
Going to, going to work.
Michael's line of questioning was really.
Okay, but if if we vote to maintain the current policy, we will not have a security officer.
Either way, whether it's your time. Until until we can recruit one who's willing to work unarmed, that is correct.
But we can get another job, another company.
Yeah, so so, so, what are our, or?
Risk.
Yeah. Well, what are our options for, our contractor can't provide the services that we asked for.
It would probably have to go back up to our, we'd have to argue.
So that would, that would obviously push things back.
It would.
Quite a bit. And that's the only thing for the entire cabinet, for the library. For you other facilities.
So the library is the only city.
Shouldn't be for a job.
He's not local. If if the library is the only city entity that would not have armed security, is that any less of a bad situation?
It doesn't leave me in a bad situation, except just considering, you know, that it would be best to have some type of security in here, armed or unarmed, going into the next couple of weeks.
Is there a, an option for the library to, rather, to have a temporary, hire a temporary service that meets the, if 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 the, this board does not want to change this policy, then want to have an unarmed person? I don't know the answer to this. Would it be possible to do too temporarily, to hire temporary, and then do an RFP for the final?
Yes, purchasing did indicate we could do something temporary if that were the case. But we do have to consider that the agreement does cover other locations as well, so on. I I'm not for purchasing, so I can't answer that question, but I do know that there is the ability to do something on a short term basis, just to kind of cover the next couple of weeks.
And I guess if we, if the bill rains, we, as we talked about in our meeting, we could try to solicit to see if we can. I'm not saying it's impossible to find somebody, I'm just saying, at the current pay rate, I can tell you, I can't hire unarmed officers.
So lower paid people can carry guns, but the.
No, 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 I'm saying, they're they're making nineteen dollars an hour now.
Is that what we're saying here?
No, what I'm saying is, somebody's not willing to work here unarmed for nineteen dollars an hour. So your price is going to go up for an unarmed guy, probably by about five bucks at least, because to attract somebody, that's what, that's what it's going to take. So if you want to spend more money, I can try to find somebody who will work down here, but that's, again, going to take probably a couple of weeks realistically. And if you hire a temporary service, I don't know who it would be, because the previous contractor, I believe, left. I don't know how many others there are out there, but you're you're going to be right at the same price point, if not more, because a temporary contract is going to cost you an arm and a leg because it's temporary. And labor is the hardest part of this equation.
And I think ultimately, the board has to decide if the a city, you know, contractor that the library has a contract with is going to dictate.
Yeah, exactly.
If you're comfortable with what they're saying, and they dictate whether we have armed security at the library versus the board of trustees, or what your library administration is recommending, seems off base.
So I'm going to move that we extend the temporary policy that's in place and prohibit firearms at the library and make it clear. That's, I'm going to make that motion.
Second?
We got to vote quick, because I got to go.
I gotta go.
Okay, so the motion is, motion, whoops, excuse me, a motion on the floor is to extend the temporary policy.
Yeah, we'll make it permanent, a prohibition of firearms.
Okay, so that's.
How long? I I, I mean, I would, I would say that we have a policy that prohibits employees.
Reaffirming the city policy.
Yeah, from carrying a firearm in the library, and that should also include security contractors, just like our policy.
And then whatever we need to do as a result of that policy, because we won't probably be able to use this firm, that's going to be another discussion.
Yeah, true.
Right, another, another discussion for another day, but this is, this discussion is active.
Yeah.
Okay. But we do not have a policy, the board trustees does not have a policy.
Well, we have a policy that prohibits employees from carrying firearms, right?
So if, in the absence of a library board approved policy, the library has to start to follow the city policy. And there's a city policy, administrative policy number three point one two, workplace violence, which provision one excludes any city employee, by extension library employee, from carrying a firearm. So there, it sounds like there's a motion and a second.
Well, I'll be, take your phone out, I'm just going to dial in. I gotta go, guys, sorry, I'm interviewing someone one fifteen, so this is really not great. Put me on speaker and then I'll vote that way. Sorry.
If you want me to do it right now, I'll say.
Answer it, thank you. Okay, I'll stay in the meeting that way.
This is Laura on the phone, as per request.
So we have a motion on the floor to extend the temporary policy prohibiting employees from carrying a firearm. It also covers security contractors.
Steve, that's not a temporary policy, it's an administrative policy. You said temporary policy, there's, it's not a temporary policy, this is an administrative policy.
I'm sorry, that's for Laura's.
Yes.
Sorry, I need to amend my amendment.
She wants to.
She can.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, Laura.
So I would amend the motion to extend the policy prohibiting firearms to include security contractors. Is that clear?
No, because you need to prohibit employees from carrying firearms, because we're not impacting library patrons at all. So it'd be a motion to extend the administrative policy prohibiting employees from carrying a firearm in the library to also cover security contractors.
So votes.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Second? Malavika, thank you. Okay, so a motion and a second to extend the administrative policy prohibiting employees from carrying a firearm to also cover security contractors. Call for the vote.
Just a quick question, is this, are we saying this is a permanent measure, or are we extending this to like the next meeting? Is this being extended permanently?
It's extended permanently, but you can revise policy anytime you need to. So you can always come back and.
Gotcha.
Okay. I'm sorry, what was your vote, Amanda?
Yeah, it doesn't prevent us from doing something differently.
Amanda, what was your vote?
Oh, yes, sorry, yes.
Thank you. Laura?
Yes, hi.
Thank you.
That's dedication, man.
Joe?
No.
Michael?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes.
You didn't get a tie.
Oh, I'm sorry. Were you tied?
Tied as a ride, no, he's here with us.
So I knew it was not here.
Yes.
Sorry. And your vote?
This was, this was tough.
Is it okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, we're kicking the can down the road, is what we're doing.
Next item on the agenda is the new business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Brad.
You saved my trip.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is new business, excuse the old business, discussion of performance evaluation process of the library director. And we'll just say that increasingly, what we have here are two pieces. One of them is the process of evaluation, and the other one is whether or not it's going to be a part of the process, whether or not it's going to be an open or closed session, and which could be, you know, depending on whether it's the full board or whether we have a valuation committee that actually performs the evaluation. This could be a smaller group, and therefore could, you know, would not be subject to the open meetings. So, anyway, so the. So, anyway, in the. Okay, I guess actually we both have the same question. So I guess it kind of boils down to whether we would, we would have the full board do it as we have in the past, and which, again, you know, my understanding was, or at least how I looked at it in the past, was that, you know, not knowing whatever's going to come out of a public meeting, that was why it was thought that such a process could be closed so that it would not possibly result in workable damage to the, to the reputation of the library director. And we had also, Jeff polled several of his peers as far as how their evaluation process goes, and that was about, that was roughly eighty percent closed session. And the other two used a committee. And. And also, I guess it kind of got started out of the email I got from the law librarian at the State Library of Iowa, who responded to something I had said in a webinar about that we used closed sessions for evaluating our director. To which she said that there have been library boards that have been referred to the, well, under the open meetings law, to the, I can't remember what his actual position is, but the person that's in in charge of that process for the state, and that, so anyway, they were reported, and I'm not sure exactly what happened to them, but that was some of the information. Also, I wanted to mention for discussion that there was a bill presented in the Iowa Legislature which would.
Increase penalties.
Increase the penalties.
That can veto.
Yes, that got, well, yeah, it got vetoed by the governor. But that was only because it was a last minute action by the Senate that left a loophole in the law. So.
It's coming back.
It's coming back. And if you didn't see that, under this bill, violating the Iowa Open Meetings Law by accident would be punishable by a fine of one, excuse me, of one thousand to five thousand dollars, which is up from one hundred to five hundred dollars. If the violation was intentional, the fine would increase to ten thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars. And the law would also mandate education on Iowa's public records and open meetings law for newly elected officials. So, anyway, with all of that, I guess the the question is, how can we proceed?
Amanda.
Well, no, I, it it seems like the question was answered. Basically, your, the city attorney said, our standing operating procedures satisfy state law.
Thank you, I forgot.
Well, excuse me, that's it.
Done, done.
It's done, we don't have to.
There's a couple, there's a couple of things, and one is to evaluate performance, one is for real estate deals, I mean, that is in the state code.
Right, right, so.
It doesn't mean every closed meeting is wrong. I don't know. So, but I mean, that's real specific, and so I can't imagine, I also can't imagine not giving, treating a manager differently than you would an employee in terms of giving them the ability of confidentiality to their performance. I mean, talk about getting your beanie sued. I mean, that is kind of part of the whole HR, you know, you don't, you know, I just, so I don't know why this, yeah, I I think it, their, you know, performance is, you know, and and you have, you request, and in some cases, they have to request that it be closed, but if you satisfy that, then, you know, I mean.
For for this exemption from the open meetings law, there has to, the employee has to request it.
Correct, and the, and, yes, and that's, and they do, so it's in law, it's in state law, so I don't know.
Or they sit in the room while you're still talking.
There's, and you say within nine.
Yeah.
So.
No, it's fine.
I don't think there's an issue here, is there?
No, to me, I I think we just go forward. I think this kind of arose because there was a question about potentially giving Jeff an increase in compensation because he has lagged behind other comparable city staff. And that was part of this, so that we could get this done before the end of this fiscal year and retroactively do it back to, was it Jamie Warren?
I don't remember.
But anyway, the 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 point was, if we did it now, then it would be built into the budget going forward, rather than our normal procedure has been to do it like in November, the end of the calendar year.
But but no, that's.
Same issue, that's.
No, no, yes.
It's different.
No, this came up because of of what Mandy Easter responded to me, and.
Gets tied together.
Yeah, and so, anyway, the the question is purely, is it, would it be an open or closed meeting? And, you know, she's, she pointed out that that she thought we could be a risk. I I just reported that to everybody because I wanted everybody to be aware of that. I also would say that within the, within the open meetings law, there is an exemption from any kind of liability. If if we, when we have a vote to go into closed session, if anybody doesn't feel like it's proper, they can preserve their exemption from any kind of fine or anything, simply by voting against going into closed session.
So do we need to do anything now today?
Oh, no, no, this was just, this was just a discussion, because next meeting we'll have an evaluation. So I just want everybody to be of the understanding as to what we're doing. So I, so as far as where we are headed, as far as the results of our discussion, I would propose that I will put it on the agenda as well.
So Steve, the evaluation, so do we do the thing with Amanda, again, to fill out the thing?
Right.
Yes.
The thing, all the thing, for Amanda's, you know.
Yeah, so there will be a, there will be a, an evaluation form coming out very soon. And that's everybody to address that as soon as possible. It'll be, the process will be less, I mean, we're not going to survey the staff or the administrative team. This will be purely the trustees, and, but generally, the questions will be pretty much the same they were before.
I do think that, I think as part of the discussion of, of raising. I do think that, I think as part of the discussion about, um, raising Jeff's salary, it was also, I think, in my mind, kind of a thought was, we were gonna shift our normal evaluation to June, every year. So we would have an annual one now in June, going forward, every year, like we used to do in November annually, every year.
Yeah, and so-
And so we, as part of that annual, we would do all this other crap that goes with the evaluation process.
So, um, actually, we need to keep it in November. The whole idea of doing it in June was that you have, you, every other year, you would have people going off the board who have, you know, five months of experience, or six months since the, of the, since it, since it would have been done in November. And actually, that would only apply, well, it only applied every other year. And so the, the thought I had was like, well, maybe people, you know, like given this situation, us that are going off the board, would participate, could participate in an evaluation, and then, but then, on the other hand, you're gonna have, when you do it in November, you're gonna have new board members with, you know, you know, some limited experience, but-
But i- if, instead of doing it at any time in November, you would just do it, the new board members would do it next June.
Well-
So everybody would be doing it in June.
But if we're gonna get in sync with, um, with the city's, um, what is it, merit increase or whatever, that, those are done in like January.
That's true, well, yeah, your budget is set, the budget's actually set in January.
I, I understand that, but, so we would be doing this in advance.
Oh, okay, all right, okay, oh, I could, I get it, and that one time would take care of it.
And if, if we had to do a retroactive compensation adjustment, we could do it as part of that. It just seemed like it makes more sense just to do it in June, every year.
Well, um-
That was my thought.
Okay, here's, here's my solution to that, is that, you know, um, it is, we're gonna do an evaluation next month, um, but that was only to, because we would need an evaluation-
In the interim.
Yes, so, and, and so after that, um, effective July one, you know, the next board can either continue that or go back to November.
It can be whatever they want, Steve, right?
And Steve, the city's recommendation is to do the evaluation annually, as you have been doing it in November, and then set for the way that, uh, that process is working, right? And then, in this case, it'd be a mid-year evaluation next month. Me, you haven't, do you, correct? Is that the correct terminology here? The mid-year evaluation?
You know, I, I didn't make any difference to me, it just seems like we're doing it twice.
Yes.
We could be doing it once.
Okay, but we, we needed to have an, an evaluation in order to adjust the staff.
I, that I get, yes. And so that was, again, that, I thought that was part of the driver, to try to do it in June this year, to catch the board members who are, who have, who are leaving in July, and then, we would just, every year, do it in June. Because again, you would be catching board members who might be leaving in July. And I don't, maybe I was thinking wrong.
Well, as I said, it was just, you know, part of, uh, of, uh, the recommendation, as far as adjusting the salary, that we would need to, well, it's not part of the recommendation, but it's, in order to do that, we would have to have an evaluation now, which would be a midterm.
Right.
So how does that connect with the salary? That's what happened in that conversation, because I'm really interested in that.
So we will be doing it online, or doing the evaluation that Amanda's sending out?
Yes.
Now we will be addressing that at the next meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
In June?
Yes.
Yeah, it's set for June maybe, yes. All right.
Just a point of information, because you all have a lot of experience on this, and I don't.
Okay.
Why do we have a personnel commission, committee, if in fact it's the whole board that's doing this?
They put together-
They direct the process.
The process.
They, they send out the evaluation instrument, get the results, put them all together, and, um,
So that would-
Calculate the final result, yes.
Because typically, when we do an evaluation, the full evaluation, there is a survey of, of staff, and there's a lot of other pieces that can come together before they come to us.
By Zoom.
This one, it's just us.
Just us, and she's gonna send it out probably, because she already has the instrument.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Standard, it will-
No, um-
So the committee isn't really involved, she's gonna do it.
Well, she and her committee.
She has a committee, yes.
And on route, on route.
So I don't know.
Well, we, um, started, so, you know, we just, we met and decided what we need, you know, categories, the smaller committee. And then usually, it's just kind of followed the same thing.
You want to come in as well?
Um, I don't think I am right now.
I thought you were.
I'm just kidding.
But she's leaving, right?
I don't think, no, no, you're not in it.
No, it's, it's Laura.
So, point of clarification, I'm gonna get a message from someone about having a meeting with the personnel committee?
No. Amanda, question for you, Amanda.
I couldn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
Amanda, do I need to do anything before next month?
As a committee.
As a committee member.
You wanna come in as a committee, you're welcome to join the committee.
I'm on the committee, but I-
Oh, you're on the committee, I don't even know who's on my committee, I thought it was just Laura.
But, but I, but I'm a late member, when I keep on, I was just assigned, and I've never done anything. I don't wanna miss doing something I'm supposed to, if I'm not, that's fine.
You're do, you're doing great, Michael, I didn't even know you were on the committee, so you're doing, you're doing good. I'll wrap you in on the, on the emails going forward, I'm sorry about that.
Sounds good.
Michael took Craig's spot.
Gotcha.
So we inherited this. Oh, that's right.
Sorry if I didn't announce that enough back then. Uh, okay, okay, so, anyway, um, okay, so the evaluation instrument will be coming out. Please respond as soon as you can, and, um, we will have the evaluation at the new meeting, in closed session, and, um-
At least you're assuming we will get a request for closed session.
That's been standard operating procedure.
You have to use, sorry. With one of those, with one of those letters off this tablet.
Here we go, okay.
Um, okay, so, yes.
Right, well, I'm, yes.
Point of personal privilege.
Yes. So today's my last meeting, after twelve years of being on the board, and I want to thank all of you for being like colleagues in this. You too.
Oh, that's right, I'm not coming next, I'm not coming next.
That's right. I'm going to Ukraine to volunteer, and I have to tell you, two people on this board reached out to me separately, these two, to, uh, offer up donations or any help that they could give for the Ukrainians where I'm going, and I'm so touched by that, guys. So touched by that, and, and really, even the messages that they wrote were just extremely heartfelt. So yes, I, I will, I will take contributions, and there are things that I can buy at the school and so forth, but I'm not, I'm not soliciting for that, but thank you guys for bringing that up, that was really great. And then this made me think more, then I contacted the school and well along. And I also want to thank the staff, um, Jennifer and Casey and Jeff. It is, it is a real pleasure working with you all, you are so professional and so kind, and I just have really liked being part of this operation, so thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes. Be careful.
Be careful out there, and I'm being on our, just, and we are bomb, we go to bomb shelters.
I, I, Steve, there's two items on the agenda that you got to run up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You just brought a couple of items on the agenda to run up.
I apologize.
The president's comments, and then there's a training in October.
Oh my God, I'm so sorry, I just thought it was my turn to say goodbye.
I didn't see Emily, I didn't think we were gonna be doing that.
No, we won't.
Oh, no.
But address it.
But I think you have to address it.
You shouldn't have used a board training.
Yeah. We shouldn't have deleted that.
It could, okay.
Okay, so there will be no board training, and, um, I don't have any further comments, I can say.
Not really. Well, I'm gonna say.
But like I say, yo, um, this, you know, please respond as promptly as you can to the survey, so we can get that going and have that ready, shake, and get that taken care of next time, and, um, that's all, Anna. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion's second to adjourn, all who's in favor, please signify by the same.
I say aye.
Aye. I am trouble.
Thank you, motion carries, we are adjourned.
You're probably ahead of us, I recall.